This was about more compliance.
Well, I'll tell you how much I had to enter my, so my own social security number, my birthday, my driver's license, front and back, my W two, my insurance card, because I didn't want to drive home and get my passport. It just took every day, all that day, and then once you got to a certain spot, they would all be off and have to get it. It was, it's a nightmare. But I mean, I would still have to do that because I'm a contact person. But having the advice, you know, I was scared to get my social security number in there and all that stuff, so. And my story.
I'm okay with what you call it. Okay? Yeah.
Find somebody to, who need to advertise that or do you know somebody or?
I. I don't know. I, I.
No, I, I.
What does Kersey do? Who's our representative for Kersey?
Oprah, here all these community and rural fairs, I, I know some grant writers for that.
I'm the representative of Kersey, that's what I was.
They do grants.
Isn't that why we hire them for work?
Um, I think they're mostly just for the.
Well, they, they do our, our economic development strategy from a regional perspective. They do a really good job of kind of helping us identify where our deficiencies are in economic development, but there's not a lot of proactive grant writing at Fort Carroll County. They, a lot of their initiatives are for regional planning and regional initiatives, which we are one of many contributors to them, so.
Last time we got anything, for example, is with George. During, when you're all suggesting it, it was the other one in Camden, they got a grant to do that. That's the last time I heard of this, like, we're doing anything.
I do think the departments will hear of opportunities that we won't see.
Right.
And I think the idea is maybe to have departments forward to the commissioners. What they, your, your department see as potential opportunities for grants, and then the commissioners decide, which, what kind of grant writer we need to do this. Because I don't think we, we can identify all the potential grants. I'd say you've got commissioners and the auditor's office and we could solicit the departments to make work. Uh, if they've heard of grants, uh, that are available, form that information on it and anything about grant writers that they encounter.
So if they hear about the grant, they can find someone to write it and get a quote, bring it up.
We can help with that as well. So if you guys want economic development cooperation, while we have some capacity to be able to collect that information from your department, we would be willing to possibly look at housing grant writer position within our jurisdiction. So I want to leave those options open to your departments as well, that, that we, it's what we do. We help the county and those state in that space, so we would offer that.
Okay, so let me ask a question back to you. What about if communities such as Rock, uh, Rockville want to have a, uh, type of grants for housing? Now, they're not incorporated communities, so it would have to come to rest of that. But could, I, I just feel like if there's type of grants out there that would help with, uh, upgrading the community and help the individual people with painting your house or re-roofing or whatever.
How many counties have that?
I think I haven't really seen where those are brought in yet for a while. I mean, I don't know.
Through, through the sewer?
I think that there's somebody who helped a couple of years ago.
That's been a little while.
The friend that's here, like, um, Mike does his grants. He lives in another corner, has done a grant, um, health department does their grants.
A lot of us do our own grants, but it's up to the scope of that grant is very small. That's why we write our own grants.
Because you only got a certain amount of time. By the time you see it and get to.
Right, and it's, yeah, it's very small. It's not a multimillion dollar grant. Uh, an example of one of the grants that's out there right now that's tied to the ARP is the USDA has a $500 million grant out there that's nationwide for the development of rural healthcare. And if you qualify for it, it, it can expand, it could help a health department expand its capabilities to respond to COVID along with other future pandemics and actually provide better care to the citizens of their, those rural counties. Is Carroll County eligible for that? I don't know. But it, that, that is one of the grants as a way out of my scope to, to look at.
Actually, I think Warren and Denver, who work us, are we in that position?
Right.
We, we've engaged your call, uh, on behalf of the redevelopment commission for the residential process. Rick is, it will be here this afternoon at one o'clock, uh, with the recent, the county redevelopment commission. Resolution as well as the city of Alabama, so Rick would be extremely beneficial.
Okay, let me try another. What about like Chamber of Commerce or, or any, where any organization for tourism development? Where do, where do they go for grant writing?
For some of the tourism grants, you can work with the state, which we have. So they'll be in office of tourism and development. They don't typically have a lot of funding to give away, but they do have a lot of resources that we're able to utilize. Um, the grants that we receive from the USDA revolving loan fund, that's in the ECG met for last year. That seemed to be worth it to get that. USDA grants are monsters. I mean, there's, they're, they're difficult and so it's good to have somebody with the experience. And some of the other grants, like the ones Towne and Camden got to do housing, you have to have a certified grant writer, so there's certain levels of certification even, so. But yeah, there's, there's some others. And some counties use some of their funding that they received last year for COVID related to start those revolving loan funds for businesses too, to get into their hands. So people are using those for a lot of different reasons.
But I'd agree with Steve, that we, I think there's things we're missing out on. Yes?
Are you still talking about the American Rescue Plan Fund, the $3.9 million that's supposed to be coming to Carroll County?
We, what we decided on that was that, that, uh, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna let Ted pursue, uh, Martin Thornburg to find out whether we have qualifications for that. Now we have stepped out of that and saying just general grants is what we're talking about.
Yep, we got a meeting in 20 minutes.
Okay, Beth?
John George, um, I have budget estimates prepared that when we get our workshops up, figures that we have, so they're ready for you to sign, Bill. And, um, I want to also tell you that we will present your budget to the commissioner, council on August 31st at nine AM, and I'll pay for it for you.
August 31st at nine o'clock.
I want to have on that. Yeah, on the Camden Pharmacy, or Farm, Camden Clinic Pharmacy, um. There's a, there's a list here that was approved with contract. A human clinic has asked if they can add to this. And their suggestion was that I come and get permission from you to upgrade this listing. For instance, if you have a high blood pressure medicine called the Synodril, and they don't have the right dosage, they can't give it to that person because it's not on this list. So they would like to have permission to add to it, but I suggested that maybe I send out to the private head and ask for employees', um, medicine that would, they would like to have added. And she wants me to give it back to her. She will price it out and then I'll bring it back to you. Okay.
That sounds real good.
So, okay. I know, um, we've had, he got an email about Florida having more in their pharmacy. Actually, that's not as accurate as what this would be. Um, sometimes Florida, if you went over there, they didn't have any stock, you were just coming up and you didn't get your order. Or plus they weren't following the contract. They would just add without your, without being known. And this is probably the proper way to do it. Not saying that they did offer more or different prescriptions, but we just need to have it with you. Is that okay to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Call the papers there. Every plan director, Kim with three eight.
I'll save the whole, if I remember.
I'll keep mine short as well. Uh, I spoke to Commissioner Brown last week about this property. Week before, before, talked about some nuisance properties in accounting. Again, I'm not, I'm not in a position where I'm trying to tell people how to live their life or what to do with their properties. That's not my goal. Uh, this one has been an issue for some time. I've been the director for two years and talked to the past directors. This has been a property or a business property for, going back to probably 10 years. Uh, I reached out to them last year. Uh, they did make.
Do you want to know where this property is?
One oh seven four eight, sorry, I get hurt, but it's on West Lower Lakes Shore Drive.
This one I came through about, did.
Yes, let's try before you go down the corner there. It's been there for several years, but.
This is the number?
Yeah, one oh seven four eight. North Lower Lakes Shore Drive. Uh, before you go down to C and C D, it's, it's down there. It's right on the corner. Like I said, it's been an issue for several years. We reached out to them. Uh, we teamed up with the health department last year. Uh, they did make some progress. They, the progress that they made was taking everything, as you can see in the picture, uh, to the back of the property. So we reached out to them, we sent them letters and made a few additions and there's a lot involved with it and we kind of worked with them. And now the neighbors, again, are, are trying to get us to, to help them out because they just don't want to come to their summer facilities anymore. I went out there last Tuesday and the Tuesday before, and what you see here is pretty much what it is now. Well, everything that was taken to the back, uh, is now back up front and there were two truckloads full again. So the story we got was, um, from the mother of the, the citizen of those here. We had no idea about this, that we'll help you get it cleaned up, and it did. They brought a big dumpster, you can see in the picture. Um, I don't know how much it's got in it now, but. So they did make an effort a year ago, it's back to where it was. We have people that send us, uh, pictures of them actually bringing the, the truckloads and stuff in. So the story we got was we're trying to get it cleaned up, the true story is they're still bringing it in. So we're gonna send them another letter, um, start the process again. And I asked Commissioner Brown to drive out there last week, which I think he did. It is, it's definitely an issue. The neighbors shouldn't have to look at that in any property, Carroll County. We're just having a hard time getting them to actually fulfill, you know, fulfill what we're asking them to do, get the, get the trash off the property. So I don't know where they got the dumpster from, but it's been there over a year. It's just sitting there. There was three campers and several cars. They did get those removed. Was there in the back there? I'm not sure. So I'm asking you guys, um, one, to go out and look at it, and two, when I start this process once again, you know, I'm gonna have to go through the whole process, so I'm gonna ask for your guys' support because this, this has been like this for, I talked to Doug, Doug had it, I talked to one of the director, and it's been like this for several years, so I don't think it's fair for the people that are back there to have to look at it out their window.
So even though we started the process before, we gotta start it all over again?
Yep. Because they did get everything out, but you can see there's a makeshift fence back here. Or they kind of hit everything. So basically they took it from the front to the back.
So anytime they make some progress and get some to there, then we have to start it over again because they added more?
Yeah, well, they got all the campers and all that, that's not in this picture. They did. They got the, they got the removed. They took everything out and a couple of site visits. I thought, you know, they made progress, a lot of progress, so.
Is there a tier level? So since we already warned them, they cleaned it up. Now we're going back, what, for the third or fourth time with letters again?
And you gotta do it by due process. So if I start the letter again, it'll be a certified letter. I give them the timeframe, um, and I tell them what the, the date is, sure it's a deadline. That's, that's when we start enforcing what we enforce. The tricky part of that is for our plan is, uh, it's me and one of our staff members for the county. So staying on top of that and getting into the courts and all that, which for, for our staff, it's tricky. But I've had good luck with actually going out and talking to the people face to face. Saying, look, I'm not, I'm not here to make your day worse. I'm just asking you to, uh, come up with a remedy to get the property cleaned up. And so far in two years, I've had a lot of luck. This one, I have, I've gotten lied to, uh, about some stuff. Where actually the person that lied to me said that they were not even, you know, oblivious to what was happening, when there are actually people bringing it in. So I just, like I said, I don't think it's fair of the neighbors, and I'm gonna go back at it again. So I'm asking you to drive out there and look at it, and if you guys have a different solution, I'd rather.
Ted, is there a tier level that we can do since we've already been there once and I did a little bit, we can keep bringing it in? Is there another way to make it faster?
No.
Go through the due process.
Start the process.
Don't leave no special ornaments or?
I had to go and indicate my letters. I, I brought it to a public meeting. I spoke to you guys about it. And that's why I'm asking for your support when, when we go through this. There's no progress this time. We're gonna take it to.
Moe Ling's guess, there is a, an ongoing process that you can go through, but they haven't expanded that to other uses.
Is this, this is just a nuisance property?
Absolutely. I mean, there's water, dryers, there's cars, there's mattresses now out front.
Hasn't Sheriff's Department been involved before?
Yes, yep, I've worked with, uh, Deputy Thomas has been out there a few times. The health department's been out there. Angie and I teamed up on it before she left. I got Kevin involved now. He's been out there. He's sent him some letters. He's got a stack of letters. So it's, you get nowhere with it. Um, every Tuesday when I do my site visits, it's just gathering again, and they'll take it back around that. So that's why I turned this off, where you can see where it's all going. And I offered to help them. You know, I said, what, what can I do as the director that, to help you get this instead of being the bad guy? Didn't want them, you know, filled up out with the weapon, but I don't know what our options as a county were, but I said, if, if you're open to it, I'll see what we can do. And she said, no, I'll, I'll start on you. So they did. It's that day, that very day that I spoke to her on the phone, I drove out there and there was four or five people out there. They were tearing into it pretty.
So they just no count.
They get to this point, and then everything backs off for a while. I mean, of course, COVID. I don't, not pushing it to COVID, but then we weren't working, the courthouse was closed and all that. But like I said, it's, this is what it is, and I, I want to pursue it because I, I don't feel it's right for the neighbors down there to have to drive by this every day and they go to their home on the lake. Uh, and this is what they see, so.
There's gotta be something else we can do. Is nothing at all?
You gotta go to, you gotta go through the due process. So that's where I'm starting again with the certified letter.
It's the job of a code enforcement that is, yep, each, each one starts a new.
We do have a nuisance ordinance. I put a copy of that in your guys' mailbox, and we, we do have that. The tricky part is with two staff members and getting to the court system and, you know, it, it's just with two people. It's tricky. So that's why I'm asking, when I get to that, I would, would like your guys' backing that, we're gonna go through it until this property is cleaned up, so. Eventually, I'd like to get a part-time person that can go out and just do this maybe once or twice a week, but that's gonna be obviously not in 2022, so that, that's what I, that's what the county, I don't have it this way, and I will have it 2022 because I'm trying to get some stuff done as staff, but it, it needs done countywide. We, we've made some progress. We've made some progress in small towns, but there, there's some I'm not sure that are, just they need, need to take care of, because it's not fair to bring the property value of the neighboring house down because of all the stuff that's in their yards, so.
Are they being paid to take this stuff?
What's that?
Are they being paid to take this stuff?
I'm not sure if they're going to auctions or if they're just going around. I'm not sure. But I have the neighbor saying, you know, they're, at nighttime, they're coming in and loading pickup trucks. So I drove out there one time and witnessed two pickup trucks full of stuff and, so. Well, I said, okay, we're gonna pursue it again. So I'm not sure how they're getting it, that, that part.
They're gonna be running the business and going around picking up the junk.
That's what I'm scrapping, I'm scrapping whatever.
I don't know if they're scrapping because it's not going anywhere, but.
Well, they take some.
Right, yes. So I don't think if people put the stuff out on the curb, I think they're driving around and, and it's free and.
They take pick, pick up.
And then it goes to, for the listing, so. I would think it goes to scrapping. That dumpster would have been full and emptyed out by now, but I don't see any moving on the dumpster for.
Last time I heard, it was $250 a ton, so it's pretty hot.
So anyway, long story short, I'm gonna start this again tomorrow. I'm gonna go back down to my site visit plan, start my process again and, and, uh, ask for your support once we get to the point where if they don't clean it up again.
As I told you, I saw today, I think there's no problem. I'll get our full support on whatever you need to do on this. I've driven by it and tried to figure out why you would watch piles of old mattresses getting wet, everything in your front yard, and I, the only thing I can figure out is that somebody's made it to haul away and they just dump it out their yard. Uh, but maybe they are just picking up whatever.
I got the story that they were people that needed a place to put it and they were just trying to have it now. And that's certainly not the case. I mean, it's, there's obviously an issue there. And like I said, I've offered to help them out. So what can I do to help you instead of, uh, going against you? And that didn't work either. So I've tried every avenue, and I've kind of, like the neighbors, I don't like looking at it either. It's, it's a nice area down there, and that's what they get to look like, to look at when they go home, so.
Well, if they value this stuff so much, why can't we tax it?
That I don't have control of.
Well, I know, but.
I can make them have a permit for a junkyard. Then if they don't have the permit, it needs to be cleaned up. I'd classify it as a junkyard.
There's language involved in that too. All I got.
Hopefully we can make progress.
More and cutler, I'd sure like for you to work on everyone. They're all over.
They are. And like I said, if we get a, if everything worked out, or I got a part-time person, they've been actually, that's all they did. Just the nuisance properties, it would be a, uh, more streamlined process and a lot more.
You know, the whole time I've been here, this has been a problem with that people coming in over and over and over. I mean, it can be in Deer Creek, it could be anywhere.
Sure.
And I really don't know that we have found a way to fix this. You know, I, I'm not saying you're not doing your job. I think you're doing your job great. But what I'm saying is I don't think we're doing enough to, to move this along, um, in its own.
This is the way the written, if you take a.
Well, it's not really, the ordinance itself is pretty strong. It's just a matter of manpower and streamlining it. And it's, I mean, it's, most counties have a division, that's all they do. They have three or four people, they have a division that, you know, once it gets to this point, it goes to attorneys and, you know, especially Lafayette, City of Lafayette and all that, there's no limit. So you've got some of this deadline, that goes to our attorneys. So with two people, that, that's not an easy task, but, um, we picked the ones that have, like I said, I've had good luck. I've had a lot of them, you know, I actually went to their door and talked to them, said, just send them a letter, let them know that I'm, you know, I'm not sending the letter to pick them up, but I'm, I'm asking them to please clean up the property for this reason, and a lot of them do. And they understand it, and I went every Tuesday and looked at the properties again. Uh, I would say over 70% of the ones that I've reached out to, I've done a pretty good job of getting it cleaned up, so. Like I said, I'm not trying to tell them how to live their life.
You read what, Steve?
Neighborhood couldn't, so they're for loss of their value.
A lot of people live.
That's what's happening. They're destroying the value of the properties all around. That's what, and I'm, I'm one of, I'm pretty radical about property rights and that a person should be able to do what with their property, what they want, everything, to a point. But all freedoms have a, have a level there that you have, have, you have to reach that level. And this is just way beyond it, and it's way beyond it for decades, and they just keep doing it. And so.
So what has to be done to classify as a junkyard?
I'll have to look at the language, but I think it, that, a lot of it's with vehicles. Registered vehicles that the rest are, I think, sort of, I'll look at it, but I don't know how many's in the backyard. I'm not gonna, you know, walk up on the property and start picking through the backyard, so. They did remove, like I said, the campers and all that was run up front, but that's, we'll, we'll tear into it. Just want to let you guys know that we're gonna start that all again.
We'll support you.
Great, very good. Thank you.
Carroll Manor or Mission Avenue? Do we have one down in here for me? Huh? Yeah. Payment source, private pay? So, full pay?
It's floor.
That's right. Except, Mr. Charles Edwards Rose in the Carroll Manor, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Uh, Abby and Libby, what about investigation building area? Huh? Okay. I don't know, I'm not very, go right ahead.
Thanks very much. Uh, I want to thank you again for taking the lead. This is a very important issue you stood up with. I appreciate your attention and the matter. I think in the last meeting, we discussed the possibility of, of using modular buildings to, uh, to resolve this, uh, to delivery of getting a couple estimates for double wide and also triple wide, uh, building. And the quotes that are attached to the pictures that I gave you are lease agreements for three years. And as you'll see, it's $113,000, uh, for a lease agreement for three years for a double wide and $157,000 for a lease agreement for three years for a triple wide. And each of those include installation, uh, they include, um, the site preparation, but does not include a parking area or access or fencing or security. They also, as I understand, include if we request the removal of the fluids that would be pursued, or if we wanted to have them just come and remove the, the fluid from the, a tank or something like that that's attached to the building, or if we choose to go ahead and put a septic system in. I also took a look at the potential of buying a modular for this purpose. And, um, they're still getting a quote to me for that, but they came up with a number of about $243,000 uh, for the building alone. And then installation, uh, freight, anchors, skirting, ramp, uh, ramp installation, aluminum step, and that does not include site parking, water, electric, septic, uh, came to about $274,000. That's for the triple wide, which brings us back to, uh, the center, going to the courthouse or the museum. I got a quote from, I'm sorry, it's not a quote. It is a general ballpark estimate only from one of the, um, people we've talked to support DK Construction. Darren Coons provided this to me, and as you can see, it's right in front of you. I would like to make one amendment to that. This morning I talked to them and, uh, we went through the quote and, excuse me, the ballpark estimate, and I didn't see in there where the removal of the concrete stage was listed in there. So I specifically asked about that. He estimated it to be $3,000 to $5,000 for removal of the stage and then, uh, application of the concrete pad where it was at, you know, it's not. Make it all flat, exactly. So then you can maybe change this to something like $125,600. That would be the ballpark quote, or ballpark estimate that he has given us to do this project in the museum. I really think this is probably the best thing for us to do. I don't like the idea. I think, oh, may I speak to the sheriff investigators, that we don't think it's a good idea to put a modular out there in the open where there's no one else around this time, um, subject to a lot of security issues, weather issues, whatever you can think of. Having that in the building here, I think is much more secure, offers much more accessibility to investigators and much more accessible to, uh, the investigation. We're still having people go on randomly to the sheriff's department, city police, saying, hey, I'll get information about the homicide and dispatch us to direct them to somewhere we can talk to them. Right now it's in the city building, assuming we'll have that. If we can put that here at the courthouse, it's just a couple of blocks away, it could be one of those locations that they can come to and we can talk to them. So I was gonna ask, do you have any questions?
I had an approval taken in, well, I heard it was in the park area, too, because she was concerned about the door, the motor.
That's also a good point, I don't think this quote would include what I talked to Mr. Coons about, was maybe renovating that area down in there for the clerk and possibly constructing a building, or excuse me, a room, the voting machines in, in that area, so that could be accessed and brought up to be used a lot easier, like actively easily done. And also, as Steve said, the making an area in there easier to be used for voting, but plug-ins around big walls, so they don't plug their machines in, deploy them and use them, you know, cheaper than that.
Well, I, I have to say that I, I went and made a lap around again, looking at everything that could be done, and I, I stopped and talked to Julia and see if she knew of any spots around. And while I was there, I asked her, I said, is there any room in this building, which would be the, the Masonic Lodge building down here, the Chamber of Commerce building? And we took a tour through, which that was on its own, just a little bit of a building. They have a room on the north side upstairs that looks to me like it's ready to move into. It's clean, it's beautiful, it's, they, um. There is one set of doors that I think, the building's very historic, like you said, it was built in 1850, was originally a hotel. There is a set of doors that have been added up there that are like French doors that are not historic. And I think that should be made into, just my talking, into a steel security. But.
Is there an elevator to get up there?
There's no elevator to get up there, no, there's a beautiful, beautiful, open stairway goes up to it. Let's move in ready if the chamber decided, you know, we have to work with them to find out if neighbors want us or not. And I don't, I, as it happened, I went back and I was talking to my son Ethan that evening and just saying, you know, I think I found a solution to this whole problem. And I was talking about the Masonic Lodge, the old Masonic Lodge here, and he says, well, you know, Dad, I own the Masonic Lodge in Flora. And we got the whole lives going up, the room upstairs here doing nothing, which is very large. I think there's a, you know, it's, it's got steel doors on already, I don't know. I, I'm more inclined, I'm still, I am, I'm sorry, but I'm opposed to doing it in a museum. I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna disrupt the voting down there, I don't wanna disrupt the future use of that room for any kind of assembly or. Look at this, we don't have enough room in this, we haven't had enough room all day in here for the people to wanna come in. And I guess I have a question to everybody, can we put more chairs back in here then now, or do we have to make things six feet apart yet?
That's a helpful question, certainly, I can check.
Okay, I'll ask you. You know, we fought the chair battle all day in here. So my recommendation that I would take would be, probably number one would be the, the, uh. Upstairs room in the Chamber of Commerce building, if they're agreeable. And have you had an opportunity to talk to any of them about it, and do they?
We had a board meeting the other day, and I mentioned the idea, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of work to do. It is, it's a nice space, but there's no heater air up there at the moment. So there, I mean, there's some things that obviously have to be done, and there's only one bathroom in the whole building, so we have to do a couple for that. So there's some upgrades that would need to be done.
First floor.
Yeah, there's one little one on the first floor.
There is one on the second floor that, that doesn't work right now.
No, no.
We don't know why, or I don't know why. But that's, that's something you have to contend with now. The one in Flora, there's heat and air up there, and there are two restrooms up there.
Do we have to be, be upon it, man and government issue?
I don't know what the rules are, but my personal opinion is that we have suspects, or people we've been talking to, who do have issues, get around it, or they have a problem bringing them upstairs. Here at least we can, we can talk to them at a broad level, if they have a problem, maybe it's not a building.
If they're wrong to be there, who tells them, who get the sheriff's department to do it? We have an office waiting for something else, or, you know, there's nothing that can pull back down and go back to the roof. Cause we got, we got less than a month now to get out.
That's, which is why I was looking for a place where it would truly be, and.
And when did DK said he can start on it, if it was approved?
I talked to him about that this morning, and he told me that if we would move forward with this, he would estimate a couple of, he would need time to finalize his quote. To be able to give it exactly, which because of his, this is only a ballpark estimate. And once that's finished, he's taking his screws on it, so.
Is there availability in the town of Flora's offices?
These are what?
Is there maybe room in the town of Flora to temporarily help them? Cause it's not a lot of time.
Well, the problem is, is, my understanding is that the evidence that's collected, you don't wanna move it at all, because that will throw your case right out the window. Am I right, man?
Well, it's.
The chain of command of it, or?
Well, so we, we have a lot of times, a lot of times when you're in trial and you have a piece of evidence, you've gotta prove a chain of custody. So each person that handles it, basically have a login and log out sheet, they write the name down, you know, Nick McLeighton took a piece of evidence out, took it to the lab, brought it back, right? So you have to have a chain of custody of where that piece of evidence is throughout its lifetime or its lifespan. And in this case, obviously, that becomes, in a lot of cases, it's not as important, right? Because they're small cases, OWIs, that's those kind of things, but it became more important, child molestation, right? The sex case that we send to the lab to get examined, that's, the chain of custody is important. In this case, every piece is gonna be highly important. So if we move it, obviously, that's gonna be a chain of custody issue, I have to say, look, it was moved from, and we'll have to ride up the law. We don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna move it ten times, of course. Just the sheer volume of files that we have in this investigation, I mean, it's gonna take some time to move these things. And so, yeah, the less moves, the better, of course, but, yeah, we just have to keep track of it in the chain of custody law, again, just so we have record of who touched it, those kind of things.
But we're in a situation where it all has to be moved now, and.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're not gonna be able to avoid, it's gonna have to be moved, we can't keep it there, so it has to be moved. I think the, the real point is, we don't wanna move it ten times, obviously, anybody wants that, just because they're filing cabinets right here before, you gotta empty them, move them, fill them back up, and then those kind of things. So as few times as possible, I, I guess, is the, is the, the goal.
Is there anything the judges could do to main navigate the state where it's at?
You could try, but holy cow, I wouldn't wanna put that on the shelf, especially in the home hospital, you know.
They've been very generous.
Yes, the things that they've done for us, I, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna do that. So, yeah, I, I, I'd like to stay away from that, I guess.
If a, if a interrogation room or interview room, that is handicapped accessible in law, it is the major factor, why can't we use this room as a security room? I don't need this on that wall.
Well, one of the reasons, I guess, we could do that, I guess, would be, we just have to re-outfit it so we can make it happen. Or it shouldn't be a problem, had to re-outfit it, but do some things that make the room more secure, I mean, just as far as the window, and kind of closing it off a little bit. I don't see a problem with making it out of interview room at all.
Have you guys seen our interview rooms that we have now? Just out of curiosity, you would be ashamed. It's not like, like, you know, when you watch a movie, right, they have a, they have a double sided mirror, so some people can observe the interview. Typically, they have an earpiece in, somebody, so you could feed questions to them that they might not think of in the interview. I mean, that's the ideal situation. If you go to the Department of Child Services office up here, they have a fairly nice interview room with that kind of setup. People can observe when they're interviewing children, that's the nicest one in our county. Unfortunately, we don't have access to it, we don't get to use it, it's only used by the department when they're interviewing children. Ours are pretty sad, frankly, I mean, I mean, we have a room in the Delphi, in the city building, it's pretty sad. And it's hard, when, when you're watching videos of the interview, it's hard to hear the questions and answers. The one we have in Flora is a little bit better, but it's not as ideal for an investigation that's going on here for, to be over and forward. But it's not even that great, we just did an interview there probably two months ago now, and it was okay, but it's still hard to hear the question and answers. I'd encourage you to go look at our interview rooms, you, you'll be shocked, it's not what you think.
I mean, we're busy.
Well, like I said, one's in the city building here, one's in the town hall, or town hall.
Yes.
In, in Flora.
Building, yeah.
So I, I would encourage you to go, I would encourage you to take Steve and have him to interview you, just brief, just questions.
I'm kinda voided.
I understand, yeah, but then watch the video back. And that's the real frustrating part, when you're watching the video back, it's hard to hear the questions and answers. Especially someone that's soft spoken, I'm not very soft spoken, so you can hear, like, if somebody that's, typically, we have somebody in there that are a little timid or scared, and when they give answers, it's really hard to hear them sometimes.
Would updating the audio equipment help?
Updating everything would help. You should go look at the interview room here and.
And the important thing to realize is the church front doesn't have one.
Right.
They don't have, they have, they have a squad room where they, each one of the guys will not even move, they just have desks, and it's cluttered. There's no, there's no place to interview them.
Steve knows, it's, when they do interviews in there, it makes me cringe, I mean, you can see all the personal stuff, they've got desks, they've got, I mean, they, everything is in there. And again, it's not great either, you know. I would just encourage you to go look at, if you, once you see the one here, you're gonna be pretty appalled. It's a little wood, I mean, it's just, it's, there's one camera, it's just pretty bad. And you gotta watch it through a TV in the other room.
I don't wanna be the commissioner and have the space for them to do the interviews, and whoever they find out that did this, we gotta do this.
The important thing here is, you know, this, this space, we choose to go through this, whatever you can use it for, not only this investigation, we can use it for other investigations that are continually coming up. But we don't have the space to talk to people. The city, as you just said, the city police department has an interview room over there, Flora police, they have one, the church front hasn't got anything. They have, they have to depend on their interview, that's what I do, use theirs. I would urge you to make a decision, please.
Any comments from anybody out there? Yes?
I have been in communication with ESNS, with our voting machines, and our personal representative that comes and helps us with elections was not available. But they have sent someone on their behalf, I would like, she's come all this way, I would like for you to be able to hear from her, her name is Michelle.
My name is Melissa May.
Melissa?
Melissa, yes. Michelle's our normal, your normal accounting.
Okay.
So it's okay.
Melissa May.
Yes, yes, so thank you, I will make it quick. So essentially, I am here to represent election systems and software, and Michelle was, I think, was not able to attend today and to express our concerns with the plans for the museum, the used museum. So in the past, the clerk's office had been promised use of the museum for storage, testing, and use of the voting machines. The possibility that that whole space may not be used for this purpose is concerning, based on the impact it would likely have on the appropriate storage conditions, the time and space for testing, preparing, and servicing the machines before each election, as well as the voters. So storage conditions, the current storage location is not ideal, according to the county's current contract, the leased machines should be stored in a room with equal.